All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the May 10th Council briefing. We have a handful of items to go over. First on our list is going to be introduction of our new CRA Coordinator, Taylor Mobbs. Heather Ireland, the Director for the Department is here with us as well. And Heather, I don't know if you want to do a brief introduction to Taylor before we have her turn her camera on?
Sure, I would love to. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are very happy that Taylor keeps coming back. It's week five, Monday number five. Taylor comes to us from St. Mary's, Georgia, and we are very excited to have her. I know everyone's been anxious to get on her calendar and have conversations with her, but I will let Taylor go ahead and introduce herself and tell you guys a little bit more about her background and experience.
Okay, thanks, Heather. I am Taylor Mobbs. Like Heather said, I came to the city of Jacksonville Beach from the city of St. Mary's, where I ran our Main Street program and our Economic Development Department. In doing that, I got to work a lot on public-private partnerships, business recruitment, retention, and expansion efforts. I did a lot of civic engagement. I served on a lot of different boards through our Chamber of Commerce and our Government and Legislative Affairs Committees. And I really found a passion for working with what in Georgia is tax allocation districts, which is the same as a TIF in Florida, are very similar, really kind of passion for public-private partnerships and working with my board up here. That is basically the equivalent of a CRA. So when I saw the opportunity come up, I could not pass it up, and I am very excited to be here.
Council have any questions for her?
There been any surprises, pleasant or otherwise, since you've been here? You know, pleasant surprises. I didn't know when I found out that this was a completely new position. I just wasn't really sure what I was going to be walking into. And Heather and the entire Planning Department, the staff have been phenomenal at helping me make the transition. And I feel like here in just a month, we've actually made a lot of big advancements in kind of figuring out where things stand and what directions we need to go. And I'm looking forward to continuing to hopefully move the CRA forward.
Dan, I see you have your hand raised.
Have you had any experience with, or have you had the chance to work with preservation of old buildings by any chance?
Yes, I have. So in St. Mary's, where I came from, our entire downtown is historic district, and we have several historic buildings. So pretty much any and every project I did in my downtown, I worked with HPC. I did a lot of preservation work. We did some work on getting some grants to restore one of our old buildings on Orange Hall. So yeah, I've done a lot. I actually enjoy doing that.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Seeing no other hands raised, we'll let Taylor jump off the line here. And just as a reminder for Council, we did invite her to the Strategic Planning Session Friday on the 14th, since she is effectively not just reporting to the CRA, but going to be in the future a liaison between the CRA and the City Council. So it's good that she gets an idea of where you're going from a strategic planning perspective. So Taylor, thanks for jumping on the call tonight.
Thank you.
To meet you, and you'll get to see them all in person on Friday.
Welcome aboard, Taylor.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team.
See you all Friday. Thank you.
The next item that we will roll into is number two, the Small Islands, and an update. This is one that's going to be going on for a period of time. The North Florida Land Trust did execute a purchase agreement for the property that makes up the Small Islands. As you can see from the agenda memo, it's actually multiple parcels, a total of five. I did want to let you know that the first parcel is going to be going to closing in short order. The original agreement did not allow for purchasing pieces. However, they are making an amendment to the agreement to allow that to happen. So the first piece of property that they will be acquiring is going to be the northernmost of the Small Islands parcel, which is actually due south of the Cradle Creek Preserve that is owned by the city of Jacksonville Beach. One of the things that the North Florida Land Trust has asked of the city of Jacksonville Beach is whether at some point in the future for either one or more of the parcels, if we would like to consider either direct ownership or operation and maintenance of the property going forward. At this point in time, I've told Ms. Perry that I've not heard anything to the contrary, but I was just wondering if there is a consensus among Council that those two options would still be on the table for any of the properties that are acquired by NFLT. So maybe the question is, does anyone have any heartburn with keeping those on the table or excluding them? I see nobody shaking their head, which means we can keep those two options viable going forward. And hopefully, in the 12-month window, the North Florida Land Trust can ultimately close on all five properties. Ms. Perry did not indicate what the cost is on each of the five, but if you consider it somewhat of a pro rata share, you can calculate real quick what it means they've already raised to date. So they're making good progress. They're going to be closing on the first parcel. And as they continue to move forward and we get updates, we will keep those updates flowing to the City Council. Any questions on this particular item before we move on to number three? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to turn the ball over at this point to Ashley Gossett, our CFO. Typically, we would go to a council meeting or a briefing to talk about our budget assumptions and the budget workshop schedule. The budget assumptions is something new over the past couple of years. As the new council members may be aware, within the Charter, one of the obligations of the city managers to prepare an annual budget for your consideration. One of the things that I'm very cognizant of is to some extent, telegraphing to the Council, what are the big picture items or the big picture assumptions that we are making for the upcoming budget? So that way, if there's anything you have heartburn with at this point in time, we can address before we print a document that rolls out the door. In July, there's a cat starting to poke up on one of the screens. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Ashley, and she will walk you through both of these items, both the budget assumptions and the proposed schedule. And we'll see if you have any questions or comments. Ashley, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mike. Actually, I was going to ask AJ Soto, our Budget Officer, to present the assumptions this year. He's been working really hard on all the different expense and revenues assumptions, and I thought it'd be best to come from him.
Hello, thanks, Ashley and Mike. The intro. I'm AJ Soto. I'm the Budget Officer here for the city. For those of you who are new to the process, I'll kind of give you a brief synopsis of where we're at at this point. We began the budget process in earnest, I would say. That's really when I start kind of prepping all the supporting documentation, kind of bringing it forward, prepping it for the coming fiscal year, start looking at the revenues and kind of pull out that crystal ball and working with Ashley, we kind of polish it a little bit. And then, you know, we go back and kind of look at some of our assumptions and see how we're also performing in the current year. So with respect to the budget assumptions for the budget that we will be presenting to you folks in July, the memo that's in the agenda gives a pretty general overview of what we're kind of working with and to present to you all. So the first thing really is the continuation of the mill rate at 3.9947. The value of a mill.
Can you bring me a beer?
That wasn't me.
Dennis, your microphone is on.
Um, the value of a mill is about 2.9 million. I would imagine that would go up as soon as I get the latest estimates from the property appraiser effective June 1. And typically, as soon as we get that, we provide a summary to the Council. So around June 1, we'll get that email and we'll share with you folks what the estimated property tax revenues would be for the coming fiscal year. We're assuming a 50% return of the South End TIF funds to the general fund. With respect to our other revenues, that's a little, that's, that can be a little tricky because the Florida Department of Revenue provides estimates for a lot of our state shared revenues, things like the gas tax and the half-cent sales tax. But Ashley and I always talk about this, they don't live and die by those projections the way we do. So they can issue their guidance, but then we'll look at it and see what our current experience is and what our previous experience has been to try and kind of gauge what a decent number will be. I'm trying to kind of go along here with this memo. With regards to expenses, you know, our personal services, the figures you'll see will be consistent with the pay plan, the last pay plan that was approved for both general employees, Launa, and then the most recent one you folks approved for the police pay plan. We assume all positions are filled. We do not budget for a lapse or any kind of period of vacancy for any positions. We have added currently a Chief Information Officer. In the 2021 budget, we actually spun out IT as its own department. And so for 2022, we'd like to see the onboarding of a Chief Information Officer as well. We've added three part-time employees in the Fire Marshal's Office. So initially, the plan was to do a deputy fire marshal position full-time, but we have found that three part-time positions actually provide significantly better coverage for the Fire Marshal's Office. So in the event that the Fire Marshal is out on vacation or something like that, we have the coverage of three additional people instead of just one person. And then, an interesting or one thing I would say, which was a pretty cool cost savings, is we provide funding for existing building inspection staff to kind of double as code enforcement support. And so that's about eight hours a week. And that has actually proven to be pretty effective, and our building inspector can kind of give you a little more of how effective that's been when we sit down and have the meetings with you folks one-on-one to go over the department business plans. Other than that, departments were instructed to hold their budgets flat. We did allow increases where they were contractually obligated. Some of our contracts have annual CPI escalators. But other than that, any reductions that were identified and placed into a reserve in the 2021 budget process were released back to departments, or in some cases where appropriate, were taken as permanent reductions because, you know, they didn't really need it. So I do want to compliment the department. So far, they have kept their requests flat, and they have been very helpful and working with me to try and present what is a responsible budget to you folks by July. Other than that, we're debt-free, as you all know. And I think we're in a, I think we're in a good position budgetarily. I'll know more here within the next three, three or four weeks.
Does Council have any questions regarding the budget assumptions? And we'll start with Counselor Jansen.
Quick question on the, on the water tower. We won't be affecting our rates on water, anything to compensate for that. And that's probably more of a question for you, Mike, than it is AJ.
We will not. Any other questions on the budget assumptions? Seeing none, AJ will let you roll into the budget schedule.
I have a quick question. AJ, on, on the personal expense, on the personal services, those part-time deputy fire marshals, are those civilians or actual firefighters? Or do you have an idea?
Those are fire personnel. They are uniformed personnel.
One of the, one of the benefits that we have is that not only did we contract with JFRD for the fire services, but JFRD utilizes a schedule where the employees work one full day on and two shifts off. We've had an expression from some of the employees that used to work here that they would actually enjoy working on a part-time basis in the Fire Marshal's Office. So we currently have two of our former senior personnel and a third that we're looking to start up that are providing the equivalent of one day a week or two-day-a-week service coming into the office and providing those inspection services. So they are all sworn fire personnel that are providing support to the Fire Marshal's Office. Seeing no other hands raised, AJ, we're good to go to the budget workshop schedule.
Thank you, Mike. For the, for the Mayor and Council's consideration here is a background of the schedule of the budget workshop calendar that we have planned upcoming. For those of you who might not be aware, typically, Council meets one-on-one with the departments to kind of go through their business plans and ask any specific questions you might have. It's also an opportunity for the departments to maybe refuel on certain portions of their operations that maybe don't always get as much attention throughout the course of the year. I'm sorry, I'm laughing because I see, I see Dr. Dumont's cat is as active as my dog usually is when I'm making presentations to the Council.
We're not in agreement tonight that he shouldn't be up here.
It's all right. Let, let him do what he wants. So yeah, for the, for the Council's consideration, we'll typically have the showcase the last day in July or July 30th. And it's, it's an opportunity for us to kind of make this big presentation to the Council about what it is you can expect to see as, as we meet one-on-one with you folks and with the departments. It's, it's formalizing the assumptions, not just the assumptions that were made in the budget, but it also provides finality to the product that we're going to be going through with y'all through the coming workshops there. And so for your consideration there, we list, you know, the dates, the times, which departments will be going over and the format. Our, our Monday, the second meeting is in person, but that's because we have a regular council meeting right after that.
Any questions for AJ regarding the schedule of events?
Not regarding the schedule, but just regarding, I know that we did the CAFR, which I know we're calling that something different, and I can't think of what it is right now. Digitally, are we going to get books for this, or will we have the budget digitally at this point?
So that's a wonderful question. I appreciate you asking that. I can do either or. Typically, we will always post a searchable PDF on the city's website. You know, as, as time has evolved, we rely on paper less and less, but my plan was to present each council member with a binder ahead of these meetings. So that way, you know, people like to take notes and they like to, they like to keep that. You'll have the option of both. If somebody doesn't want, you know, a physical binder, you can let me know, and I'll just be sure not to give it to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for AJ? Seeing none, oh, Counselor Stokes.
Adrian, just, um, and looking at the schedule for the tentative dates for budget adoption and then kind of circling back to the last point on the mill rate and property tax revenues, we have the South End Tax Increment Fund return in there. And I don't remember exactly when we're supposed to have our conversation with the CRA. If, if the Council recalls, we gave them a year to come up with a plan on the reduction. Will that, and this kind of for Mike, will that, will we be able to have that conversation in time for budget adoption because um, right now, we don't know if we'll have that 50% based by September 7th?
I would, I don't know the answer to that question for Stokes, but certainly that can be a point of your conversation when you have the joint meeting between Council and CRA on May 26th, I believe. I'm sure that that will be a topic of discussion. I know that our staff has been working with the CRA board and with Ms. Mobbs to go through the process of identifying potential projects that are considered outstanding to the South End CRA. I think based on the project list that has been identified to date and is possibly considered viable projects. I'm not sure that those rise to the level of 200% collection, but that's not my determination to make. I can only make a recommendation. I don't know if Ashley, if you want to add to that, but clearly, I think that'll be a conversation topic on the 26th.
Yeah, actually, if I could just add, we're projecting the 50% return. This is not part of the formal agreement that we had put in front of Council back in March. This is based on our estimates. If the CRA develops new projects, it's unlikely, or actually, with the timeline as it is right now, if the CRA is to develop new projects, the cash flow would happen in 2023 or later. So at the end of 2022, we are still projecting a surplus in the fund balance in the South End. And per the state statutes, we have to assign every dollar in fund balance to specific projects. And so while they're still forming or still going through the process of looking for other projects that they might want to add to the plan, we're still going to have the surplus, which is why we went ahead and programmed it into the 2022 budget.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. AJ, thank you for the presentation on those two topics. Great job. Thank you, Ashley, as well. And we will jump into our penultimate items of the night. Beach dune protection. The Council may remember that a few meetings ago, Mr. Kevin Brown came to City Council and spoke about a volunteer project to install PVC pipes and nylon ropes for dune protection. I'm going to turn the floor over to Dennis Barron. And he will make a brief presentation and ask for some direction from Council as to how we should proceed on this particular item. So Dennis, the floor is yours.
All right, Mayor and Council. After the meeting with, where Mr. Kevin Brown addressed the City Council, me and myself and Mike and Mr. Brown got on the phone, and we had a conversation to kind of identify exactly what he was looking to do or what he was requesting that we do. So we come up with a couple of avenues, how to proceed with this project, and we're kind of looking for the direction from the Council itself to help identify whether this is, is a project that the Council wishes us to supervise the installation from Mr. Brown's Fletcher Marine Coastal Club, or whether this is a project that the City Council would prefer that Public Works just undertook, installed, and then also as well as how we deal with the maintenance going forward. After talking to Mr. Brown, the conversation was, while he, he tries to do his best to keep poles up and ropes up, sometimes you can discover that large areas have been dropped down and requires a little bit more extensive upkeep and maintenance. So we've got, I, I think we listed them out in the, in the briefing memo as five different questions, just to kind of have an idea one-on-one as to which, which direction the City Council felt we should do this. And the first question was, is it, do we wish to actually install these PVC pipes, tees, and ropes and signage? First and foremost, is that a project the City Council endorses?
And Dennis, before they answer that question, maybe you can talk a little bit about the history of what you found out of PVC pipes around some of our dunes and what you currently have for stockpiled materials at Public Works. Because I'm not sure if everyone's aware of the history that you found out through the staff at Public Works.
Okay, and through the, through the staff at Public Works, the year that we had two hurricanes back-to-back, we had actually these PVC pipes and ropes installed on all the dune areas as well as on all the beach end areas. And it requires both to be installed to actually be an effective mechanism to keep people off of the dunes. Obviously, if they're coming from their vehicles and they cross wherever they want, and then they see the ropes, they've already done the damage. So we've got to actually line the beach ends themselves with ropes and signage as well. We do have some existing beach ends that are still roped off, and that's simply because we've had issues, a lot of issues with people getting onto the dunes from those particular beach ends. So those are still up even today. I drove them Friday to verify. But what we found out is that the request of the city manager at the conclusion of the second hurricane, all of the materials were removed from the beach. All of the pipes were pulled up, all the rope was pulled up, and, and all the signs were taken down, or most of the signs are taken down. We do provide signs when a condo owner or a property owner makes a request to Public Works for a keep-off-the-dune sign. We do, we do provide those to the individuals. We have a, we have a stockpile, I'm going to say probably close to 10 to 15 garbage cans full of all of the materials we need. The, the, the Street Department Superintendent Dave McDonald actually has five miles of rope all on a school, ready to string all this up in the event that you know, the decision is made that we need to go ahead and do this. It's not really been something we do as a, as a proactive thing, because it does require maintenance, and it does require quite a bit of work to make sure that they all stay up. And as the dunes and the sand moves around, you'll have these poles that will all of a sudden be buried to the top, and then you'll have other poles that it pulls all the sand away and they all fall over. So there is, there can be some significant maintenance for a long-term project to keep up. So I guess that's the, the basic back history that we know, that, that we, we did have them up for the period of the two hurricanes, but then they ultimately removed at the request of the city manager, and they've not been installed simply because we haven't had a request to install them again until now.
So now we can go back to that first question. Is Council, does Council desire to put PVC and nylon rope back up on the beach surrounding the dunes? And the first hand I see is from Mayor Hoffman.
I just wanted to say, after this first discussion, I was, I went out for a beach walk, and there is still some PVC pipe and yellow rope up at 8th Avenue North. If anybody cares to see what it looks like when it's not maintained. There's also a rusty old bike rack, and you can see the old boardwalk there. So little, little trip down memory lane. But I walked north into Neptune Beach, which, where they do have the rope and the PVC pipe installed. And it looks really good. It's probably pretty freshly installed, so it's, it's maintained and it's orderly. I would support this. I do not feel like we need to do it across the entire beach, but I do think we need to do it in our high-traffic commercial areas, especially with the, the busy summer events, particularly 4th of July coming up. And I would defer, I'm going to just, I'm jumping through all the questions, but I would defer to Mr. Barron on if we have the, the capacity to set up well with high school students, or if it's something that would be better served by, by our staff. But Coach Brown runs a pretty, a pretty organized program there. He is retiring, so I don't know if that, if his leadership of that program retires with him or not, but if he says he's going to do it, he'll, he'll do it, and he'll do it very well. So, so I do support this. I don't think we need to do it all the way down the city, though.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Golding.
Yeah, so I did the same thing that Mayor Hoffman did, and I actually sent some photos to Mike of what was done in Neptune Beach. And that was completely done by Kevin and his students. And I talked to Kevin about it, and he said that they are 100% willing to do what needs to be done to get it installed in Jack's Beach. And, and there's even an opportunity that we could make it a community project and kind of get some buy-in and, and involvement. I personally would, would love to help with it. And if other council members want to help too, I think that could be a, a team-building project for us perhaps, right? And, and you know, I was thinking, if we really wanted to go so far, we could get people who live in certain blocks to help with their block or whatever. It just depends on how, how we want to go with it. But I don't, I don't know that we would need to have our Public Works Department do it. And I personally would like to see us focus on the high-traffic areas and, and get those up as soon as possible because especially before Memorial Day, if possible, because we're going to have, you know, we're going to start to see the, we already, we're already seeing a lot of people come to the beach on the weekends. And so I would like to see our, our dunes protected. And ultimately, when I talked to Kevin, he said at a minimum, he thinks it would be good to have the, the fencing from 16th Avenue South, maybe all the way up to Seagate in the long run. And because, you know, anything below 16th Avenue South is more residential and doesn't get quite as much traffic. But in the near term, I would like to see us do something in the high-traffic areas for sure. And then if we can expand it, you know, a little bit further, that would be great. But I'm, I'm in full support of letting Kevin and his kids and, and the community have a shot at trying to get this installed. have a shot at trying to get this installed as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nichols.
Thank you, City Manager. Just a couple of thoughts. The, I guess, how difficult is it to take down? I mean, if we are getting into a hurricane, a hurricane is coming, and if those wash away, I wouldn't want them to get into the ocean. Or, you know, is it something that we would be, we'd be taking down, or they just stay there and hopefully make it through the hurricane? Or, I mean, as things were washed out in the past, we probably would have lost a lot of that stuff. So I don't know if five miles of nylon rope is good to have in the ocean. Next thing is in the South Jackson Beach, in the more residential area where homes have direct access to the beach. And I guess they're, they're required, I mean, we have to supply them with, they can have access, they can have their own pass. And I've seen a lot of people in Neptune Beach, some arguments began because these people are going to their houses and people are yelling at them about being on, being on the sand dunes, which they're legally allowed to be on. I don't know if, I would probably skip the residential area in the south and and focus mainly on the high-traffic areas and where there's substantial parking and stuff as well. You know, I'm, I'm pleased that I don't see a lot of people in the dunes on a regular basis. I think our signing and our messaging out to the public does work pretty well now that people realize they're not supposed to be there. But do you, I guess my other question to Dennis is, do you all see a lot of people in the dunes? You see a lot of damage having been done by people at this time? And if not, is it really worth the time and effort of maintaining the, installing and maintaining it? If there really isn't that big of a problem anymore?
I, I think what we see from the public works end is on any of the walkovers where there's stairs, we seem to have a problem with people bypassing the stairs with their coolers and all the stuff that they're dragging with them. Obviously, they don't have the capacity to really carry them up the stairs and over the dunes. So that does create an issue on the, on the handful of walkovers that do have stairs as opposed to ramps. And I know our directive to move forward on the dune walkovers themselves has been to replace any of them that we can with ramps, you know, as we go forward to, to, to help eliminate that problem. Even if they're not in an ADA compliance situation, at least they would be able to get their carts and their ramps and their bikes and all their stuff up and over the ramp. So we don't, we do see that, and we do see people on the dunes. And most of the time, it's an educational piece. It's, it's not our, our local, locals that are, are hanging out and playing on them. It's the people that don't have any idea. And I know in talking with Mr. Brown, some of the ideas we threw around as well, we're trying to, maybe going to try to put a QR code link up on some of these signs that can kind of, kind of take them off to the restoration of the dunes process and why the dunes are important to the beach and how it functions, just so that it's not a keep off the dune sign, but there's actually some information availability for anybody who is concerned and wants to know more to try to do it. And that's why I said we kind of tried to, we didn't know exactly where to go with this. So that's why we kind of hit it as a, as, as a pilot project from the, from the Second Avenue South to Eighth Avenue North, the main, you know, commercial corridor as the first and foremost. And then, and then, you know, have discussions as we see, see it going. And I don't think it's ever been removed, because these actually get tied to the walkover. So they run from the walkover all the way to the next walkover. So even if the posts all came out, the rope would still be tied to the walkover. So unless we just completely lost all of the walkovers, I don't think we would lose any materials in a hurricane. But obviously, we go out and collect up the garbage cans and stuff like that in that event.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I don't see why we wouldn't do a pilot project and kind of try it out and, you know.
All right, Councilor Mesa, followed by Counselor.
I agree with Mayor Hoffman and Sandy Golding. We could probably concentrate on the higher-traffic area. I know in front here of the, of the rec and the pure restaurant, I see a lot of people going into the dunes. And I will be more than happy to help with this project, have a little team building experience, get the community involved, will be more than happy to sponsor beside where the rec is and maybe a couple of blocks over. I think this is great and call me in to, to help out. That's it.
Counselor Golding, followed by Mayor Hoffman.
Yeah, just a quick revisit. Vice Mayor Nichols, I just wanted to share with you that Mr. Brown, he and his students put in about 3,500 sea oats east of Margaritaville several weeks ago. And he, he had gone out there, you know, about a week later, just to check on them and see how they were doing. And he, he said there were a lot of people in the sand dunes walking on the sea oats. And that was one of the things that really kind of pushed him over the edge and said, look, we really need to do something. And if you have the opportunity, go to Neptune Beach, because Coach Brown has done several things in Neptune Beach that haven't been done in Jack's Beach. And, and the, that, the PVC barrier that they put there has been in Neptune Beach for a while. And you can see a definite difference in the height of the dunes in Neptune Beach compared to Jack's Beach. They also have done something he calls a grape rake, where they get volunteers out there and they rake up the seaweed to the toe of the dune, and that helps to build up the dune as well. So there's a lot of, I, I see a lot of really good things that have happened from the, the effort that they've put in in Neptune Beach. And I'd like to, I hope to see that we, you know, see the same thing in Jack's Beach if we were to do this as well.
Thanks for the information about in front of Margaritaville that, you know, definitely we're planting sea oats. I mean, we need to protect those.
Mayor Hoffman, followed by Counselor Jansen.
Just a few things I heard there. A few of us have volunteered actually helping Coach Brown and his group planting the sea oats. And maybe we can encourage him to engage the hotel staff perhaps to, to do that. And I completely agree, this is a great opportunity for community engagement and for the council members who are willing to get out there and help install these. Also, Fernando mentioned sponsorship, and that's probably another great opportunity that we have to help fund the Marine Science Club. And I do want to just say, and, and thanks in part to, to Coach Brown and his group, but through a lot of different efforts, if you look at historical pictures of the beaches, there used to be a seawall. And walls don't really help once the water gets higher than the wall. And then followed by a bunch of big boulders were put out in front of the wall and rocks don't really stop water either. So I mean, that's as recently as the 60s and 70s. So the fact that we have such a mature dune system that we do right now is, is really in stark contrast to what the beach looked like kind of in the pre-hurricane, pre and post Hurricane Dora days. So I'm for one really proud of it, and I think it's our responsibility to, to help protect it and continue that growth. So I'm glad we're having this conversation.
Counselor Jansen.
Yeah, so my vote is for letting Kevin Brown and his crew go ahead and establish it. The question I have for Dennis is, in your conversations with him, did he also volunteer for the maintenance portion of that as well? Or is that being pushed on Public Works?
The answer to that is yes. He, he mentioned that he walks the beach every day. The Turtle Patrol walks the beach every day. They know concerned citizens and people in the area walk the beach. And when they see these down, a lot of times they'll take the time to put them back up or, or at least try. So the answer is really yes. It is that being a combination. And I think that's one of the things we have to make sure we do too, is we, we manage the expectations, you know, that we don't have crews working on Saturday and Sunday to output these, put these back up. So if, if a chunk of them's knocked down on a Friday night and we get a call saying, hey, there's, you know, 20 of them down and there's ropes all down, you know, do, do we have the expectation that we're willing to incur overtime to call people in to put all this back up? Or is it okay to just be addressed on Monday morning? That's kind of where one of the questions at the end was aimed at. The volunteers may get to it, but if the volunteers don't get to it, ultimately, it comes back to, we're going to be the ones that get the phone calls. So we got to kind of be the ones that are prepared to do the maintenance on it.
Sure, I, I guess that's probably an extended conversation with Mike, with Kevin and Mike, is to figure out how that's going to be handled. I don't, I don't see this being an emergency basis where we got to call people out and pay them overtime. But in the same vein, probably wouldn't hurt to make a phone call to Kevin and say, hey, listen, there's 20 plus, you know, pipes down or what have you. And maybe he can get a crew together and on the following Wednesday or whatever, you know, just pick it time and head on over there and see if he can do it. Now, if we start getting the, well, we're not doing that anymore, well, that kind of is a game changer.
And we managed it before, as far as Public Works goes, you know, any of those calls, we're retrieving Monday morning. And then we just naturally put a crew together on Monday to go out and just, you know, run the row. And if they're down, put them back up and get them, get them, you know, just taken care of on a Monday morning scenario following, you know, following the weekend. So I, I don't know, it's not that they would be down all week and waiting for somebody to come back and put them back up later on in the week. We, you know, we will be sending a crew to address it on Monday. It's a matter of just making sure that, you know, people understand that we're not going to come out on a, on a Saturday or Sunday to put all those back up if they get knocked down or taken down.
Sure, I'm for it. Just if it ever became problematic, I'm sure you would have a conversation with Mike about that.
Exactly.
We want, we wanted to make sure that the, the level of service expectation was understood by the council. Setting the PVC pipes back up or repairing a cut rope would not be what we would consider to be high priority. So if, if as Dennis is saying, we had the Monday crew that goes out and they reset a handful of PVC and knock down or fix a section of rope, if we get a call on Tuesday morning that says there's more pipes down, we may or may not get to it by the end of that week. We'll definitely catch it on the following Monday. But if we have crews that are in the middle of overseeing construction projects or doing pothole repairs, we're not going to be pulling them off of those pre-scheduled projects to go fix this in that type of timeframe. Might have to wait a few days before they see any action.
Right, and that wouldn't preclude us from calling Kevin and saying, hey, this is the situation.
Correct. So we wanted to make sure that you all understood where this would fall from a priority perspective in regards to other work that Public Works has going on. And I see a lot of heads nodding, so I'm, I'm not sure you really have any issues with taking that type of an approach towards it. That's good. Councilmember Mesa, followed by Councilmember Stokes.
Yes, Mike, I'm glad you brought that up. So now we could clear the air of, on the priorities. Idea question to Dennis and maybe Mike. So if let's say 20 of these PVC pipes ropes were down, I'm sure a lot of the beach locals here will probably help and, and put those PVC pipe up. And Dennis, I know you brought, brought up the, having the QR code on the sign. Now, since this is something that the community will probably participate in and will take pride in, is there a way that we could add, hey, if you see it, if you see a PVC pipe down or a rope, please put it up? Is there anything that we could do like that instead of having to call Public Works and let them know? I guess before we call Public Works, if we could send a message, like social media post, hey, if you're in the area and you want to protect dunes out, please, you know, feel free to put the PVC pipes back up. Do you think that's something that could work?
As, as part of the communication plan with that QR code and developing the, you know, the site that that takes you to, I would be working with, with Jacob Board, our, our information officer, to do some education out there on Facebook as well and the other social media platforms to assure that we can. I mean, I agree with you 100%. If we can educate, you know, more of our locals, and even that, that's an opportunity. I know several people on the council have their own pages and they share the stuff off of the city pages as well as, as sharing it off to the, to the Jacksonville Beaches, you know, Facebook page. So I think that, that multiple opportunities of sharing that information can always help so that people can see, hey, if you see it down, set it back up. And, and a lot of times that's what happens. People will, you know, the locals will educate the people that are hanging out on the dunes until it becomes a point that it becomes aggressive or, you know, and then they'll just let it go and, and let it be what it's going to be. But a lot of times if, if people are hanging out on the dunes, they'll, the locals will say something as long as they don't feel like it's a scenario that's going to go take them down a path. And, and most of the time, it's just education and people just don't know. So I know we'd have to put together some additional signage to make sure that we've got enough to go. And then I know the only other concern that Public Works has is we're just a little concerned that this can become contagious, because people will see it in some areas and then they'll be calling and want to seeing it in more and more and more until we do the whole entire beach. And so that's kind of why we wanted to make sure we, we clarified that we were interested in starting as a, as a pilot program. And then if it can, if it can be pushed out to expanded north or south or both, fine. But at the same time, we will get the calls from the homeowners on the south end that want to keep everybody out. And we will get some from the condo owners on the south end where, you know, they, they don't have the same protections and they're wanting it as well. So we just kind of want to make sure we're clear on, on our marching orders as to how we're, how we're managing this program.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stokes.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was, I was going to kind of say is that I think we should consider this Eighth Avenue North, the Second Avenue South, a pilot project and really run with that and, and let us do some sharing on Facebook and, and protection sharing and have City of Jack's Beach and all that kind of stuff, do it and incorporate the technology. I brought it up last time we talked about this, and it's still on my mind. I still, I still think some heavier protection past this would be something to consider. I know back in, it would be, I guess, the mid 90s, there were some fencing on the beach. And, you know, I, I remember this project when I lived on 10th Avenue South, it was done there. And I remember being at an airshow, I think it was, maybe it was some big beach event that had drawn a large crowd. And there was the PVC pipes, the ropes, the signage, and there were still people on the dunes. I, I know that this isn't an end-all, but signage and ropes isn't going to stop somebody who really doesn't care. So I would like for us to at least in the future, consider if this pilot program works, if, if it does say, oh, hey, where we are making a dent in people walking on the dunes, what else can we do that is beyond PVC pipe and rope? Similar to, I mean, when I lived in, on the beach in the 90s, lived in the Waterford there, there was a wooden fence and you couldn't, physically could not get on the dune because there was a barrier protection there. And the sea oats had grown and everything into a way that, and so if we could at least get something to get some sort of heavier barrier, I think that's going to be more effective than PVC and signage for the future. So I do support getting a pilot project started, but I also think that we should, you know, try to find something more permanent to, to enable protection, because this is a huge part of our mitigation strategy are the dunes for protecting us from seawater incursion. So whatever we can do to protect them, I think is important for the whole beaches from east to west.
Just to address a couple of your things, I know we did have some discussion on what, what the, the wooden slat fencing internally. And, and I know it is used when you need to help promote additional dune structure. Most of our dunes at this point in time are already at their, their maximum assigned height from DEP slash the Corps of Engineers. So I don't know a more permanent structure beachside would be approved or allowed by DEP as well as Corps of Engineers above and beyond the PVC roping situation, unless we're trying to do a dune reconstruction program to where we know we want to deposit of additional sand. Because that's one thing you will get with that more solid fencing is it's got to meet some particular rules, just like, just like your, your structures around decks and whatnot. So the kids can't get their heads stuck in them and can't get their arms stuck in them. So to put them in and to be at a permanent structure, it will also cause additional sand to be dropped in that area, because that's the natural force, just like it does for, we use the same thing up north for snow. So it was the same scenario is it, it causes that wind-blown sand to be dropped at those areas. So it will help re-nourish and re-establish that dune in that particular area, but it'll also make them bigger. And, and right now, we're at the maximum height limit that DEP wants us to be at. So we've got to be a little cognizant of that as well.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands raised. Dennis, do you feel you got the direction you needed on this particular item for tonight?
The only other question. Uh, the only other question that I don't think we have any direction on is how long we want to leave these barriers in this place? Is this going to be, um, you know, till just to the end of the summer, just the end of hurricane season? Or is this just gonna be open-ended in, until us, who makes the decision that we're not going to have them any longer?
I see a lot of net heads that were nodding, who got to the point of saying, leave them in as open-ended.
That sounds perfect. Then I got my direction.
Yeah, and Dennis, I, I think what you can probably do is plan on marking on your calendar. That will come back to the council at some point in the late fall, uh, just before the holidays. And we'll give an update to council on how the program worked out for this particular summer.
Sounds fantastic.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Um, Mayor and Council, while that covers everything that was on the agenda, I do have one last question for you tonight. I sent out to each of you earlier today, um, from, uh, Counselor Golding, a copy of the Florida League of Cities letter that was being sent to Governor DeSantis requesting that he veto House Bill four oh three with regards to home-based businesses, based on the fact that there were some amendments that were made to that particular House bill on the last day of legislation, uh, this particular year. If you're all okay with it, I've actually, um, taken the letter and modified it for what would be the mayor's signature representing the city. But do any of you have any questions or do you have any problems with, uh, the mayor signing off on that letter and us getting it into the governor's hands? I see a lot of people saying no, so we're good to go on that. Excellent. Uh, so Mayor, we'll have that ready. And if you're okay, we'll put your electronic signature on it. We'll send it to you tomorrow to take a quick look at. But it's basically the same letter with just a few modifications to remove Florida League of Cities and make it reference to the city of Jacksonville Beach. Um, Mayor Golding and, I'm sorry, Counselor Golding and Counselor Mesa. We'll start with Counselor Golding.
I just wanted to mention, Mike, that in the, uh, League of Cities meeting, they asked that we send it to Michaela. And I think that's in the email that I sent you because they want to compile a packet of letters from all the cities and then they will present the packet to the governor. I, I imagine we could send it, uh, independently if we wanted to as well, but they, but, but they definitely want us to send it to them so they can include it in one big packet that they will give the governor.
Yep, we'll, we'll get that to Michaela. And Counselor Mesa.
A couple of things. First one is related to this. The other one, I think I could just wait to bring it up, non-related to what we're talking about. Can we email it individually as well to the governor's office? Are we allowed to? Can we do that as well?
There's, there's, there's nothing that precludes any of you from reaching out to the governor's office and expressing your concerns with it. I think there is a little bit more of air of formality to it when it comes as an official letter from the mayor on city letterhead. And, uh, clearly if, if the mayor is sending it on behalf of the city of Jacksonville Beach and the city council, then it's representing all seven of you. Counselor Golding again.
Just in follow-up to what, uh, Councilman Mesa was saying about contacting the governor, um, I just wanted to mention that there is an appropriation item that will be going before the governor as well for a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the license plate readers that we would like to get for the Jack's Beach Police Department. So that's a great opportunity for all of us as council members to reach out the gov, reach out to the governor and ask him to support that line item. Um, and Mike, if you, I think you may have the line number, because I don't think I have it jotted down, but, oh, it's line twelve forty-nine A in SB twenty-five hundred. So if anybody would be so inclined, I think it'd be great to let the governor know that we, we support the hundred fifty thousand dollars for the license plate readers too.
Councilmember Golding, can you repeat that number again?
Yes, it's line one two four nine A. And that's in SB, as in Senate Bill two five zero zero.
And for the benefit of all council, I just forwarded the email to all of you that I sent to the governor's office uh, in support of license plate readers. So it makes reference to the line number and the, um, SB twenty-five hundred reference where it's located. So if you'd like, you can use excerpts from what I've already put together. Uh, but it also has the governor's email and, uh, one of his, uh, chief deputies that is, uh, in receipt of these as well. So if you have any comments, just look at the email or any questions, look at the email. And if you have any, um, follow-up, please let me know. Um, so given that we've gotten through those items, that brings us to the last two items of either future briefing topics or committee assignment reports. Um, we can start with future briefing topics. I did want to let the, uh, council know that we've currently scheduled, uh, for May twenty-fourth, a council workshop. And that will be in person in the council chambers. And that will be a presentation being made by, um, developers for Windward, which is the new ownership of Beach Marine. And they will be presenting some of the concepts of what they would like to try and do with their property. There will be a precursor presentation by our in-house staff of planning and development who will walk you through all of the land uses and zonings that are currently in the area of Beach Marine and then walk you through what the process is that they would need to follow and some of the hurdles that they would need to overcome in order for their project to become reality. So that will take place on the twenty-fourth in place of a council briefing.
I'd like to, if possible, I'd like to request to move that, move that meeting to six o'clock so I can attend. I've got a, I've got my uncle's funeral that day.
Does council have any concerns with pushing it to six PM instead of five PM?
Thank you.
My head's shaking now. We will bump that to six PM. I also see that the mayor has her hand raised. Mayor Hoffman.
Oh, sorry, just wanted to offer a future briefing topic. Um, I apologize for missing the last briefing. I would have done it at that time. But, um, I'd like us to take some time to review the special events policy for the city. Um, it's coming up on five years since we did a major overhaul of it. And I think one of the things that might be inadvertently happening is that we're, um, precluding events that, uh, we would all probably agree are, uh, not only resident-friendly, but also embrace the beach life. There's a women's surf contest, a boat show, and a few other examples like that, that I think we're, um, maybe deterring, uh, without meaning to. So I'd like us to take some time to review that. And I know, um, Ms. Dumont had some comments on that when we last, uh, updated the special events policy, uh, a few months ago. Which I cannot remember what that issue was, but it was some, an add-on to our special events policy. So like us to consider that.
Are you all good with bringing that back to a future briefing? Heads nodded and the thumbs, okay, good. Uh, Counselor Mesa followed by Vice Mayor Nichols.
Uh, this is not really a briefing. I just wanted to bring it up because I told these individuals. But I got a poll today and I was approached yesterday about, uh, commercial trash pickup and it's getting really bad. I know, you know this already, um, but for the commercial or for the central business district, uh, we've experienced the same thing and I know it's getting really bad. And, uh, we're going into busy season here in downtown and I don't know what else we could do as a city for the trash pickup to get better. It's just getting bad. Uh, the dumpster, the dump truck came over to this business and didn't even pick up the trash. They just stopped by and left. And in the south end of Jack's Beach and other businesses as well. So I just wanted to bring it up and I hope we could do something with the company. That's it.
Mr. Barron is fully aware of all of these issues along with his staff. Um, the only thing I can say at this point is that it's not an isolated issue and it's not only with the solid waste provider. Uh, the other two beach communities, I've been in contact with both of their city managers. Neither of them are hap- happy with their solid waste provision either. Uh, one of them uses the same provider as us. One of them uses a separate provider. Um, I can also tell you that in talking to, uh, Charlie Latham, who's now working with Clay County, Clay County is also having similar problems along with areas of Jacksonville as well. So this is, um, from what we're hearing from the solid waste providers, it's an employment-related issue. It's getting people in the seats to drive the trucks and having the regularity of the same person in the truck so they know what route they're supposed to be driving. Um, while that's not an excuse, it's an issue that's affecting not just them, but a lot of other businesses around the state that are having problems filling vacancies and job positions right now.
Now, is, uh, are other waste management companies having the same issues or is just this particular?
This, this one in particular is having issues, especially with the transition from advanced to waste management with their takeover of the company. Um, but also the solid waste provider for Neptune Beach is also having issues. And, um, they're having discussions about what to do with their contract going forward.
Is there, I know, I'm assuming if I'm correct, the contract is up next year? Is there any, I guess, is there anything in the contract that could be the city can terminate and find someone else in an emergency? Or is this something that we're gonna have to wait until the contract is up?
We have, we have eighteen months left on the initial contract. I know Mr. Barron's on the line. He's probably listening. We have eighteen months left on the contract. The, us and any other provider has right now is that if you cancel your contract and take advantage of whatever the termination notice is, you're going to find to pick up the service and go with it. Uh, because the service is not just picking up the trash, it's supplying the cans, the dumpsters, the roll-offs, the compacters, the vehicles and the personnel to perform all the service. And if your company is not staffed up and prepared to do all of that on a, on a moment's notice, then you need to have an extended period of time to transition from one provider to another. Uh, so that's something that, again, all three beach communities are talking about. Um, we're not sure where it's going to go, but hopefully it's an issue that resolves itself in the next month or two, especially with the governor taking some stances with regards to, uh, unemployment and requiring people now actually show, I think it's minimum five applications per week in order to be able to collect. So we'll see where this goes, but hopefully we'll have some resolve in the next month or two. We share the same frustrations that the businesses are. Um, Vice Mayor Nichols followed by Counselor Stokes.
I had a couple of possibilities. Um, first of all, I believe the governor got a couple of bills today for resiliency on his desk and, you know, there's gonna be a lot of grant funding and stuff tied to that. So I, I think we just really need to keep that in our forefront, um, where we are as a coastal community that we need to do whatever we can to attain grant funding and stuff to really put our, put our community in the safest situation long-term possibly. That kind of ties into the, uh, infrastructure with the, uh, paving and putting curb and gutter and, and sidewalks in the community, in the, in the residential areas that are west of Third Street. We had a lady come in a couple, um, I don't know, a month or two ago. And she has a property, I believe it was like Fifth or Sixth South, that got flooded continuously. And, and I ran into her a couple of days ago and, and she definitely has some, some concerns. And, you know, I know construction is getting expensive right now, but I, I'd like to see some kind of, uh, at least bring that forward. Have come up with a plan of how we're gonna address, um, you know, getting some, we have, we have the right-of-way. We've got everything else and they kind of, a lot of them look and see what we're doing in the downtown business district going, oh, well, why, those are being done, but nothing over here. And they kind of look at it like the rich people are getting, are getting, um, preferential treatment and, and it's, it's hard to explain to them where the tax revenue is coming from to be able to do that and to get them to understand. But, you know, I just want to make sure that we keep that in the forefront and try to figure out a plan to get the rest of our residential areas west of Third Street to a, uh, you know, a safe, uh, safe conditions for pedestrians and bicyclists and, you know, hopefully long-term get curb and gutter and, and, you know, resolve some of the drainage issues we have on that side. But those are the two main issues that, uh, I was kind of concerned about right now.
So to try and maybe summarize that, we'd be looking at, um, residential right-of-way standards and level of service and long-term improvements, what that would look like. You all agree that would be a good topic to talk about at a briefing? Maybe get a presentation from the Public Works Director as to what a typical section might look like and how we might phase that in over a long period of time.
And I'm al, and I'm also a fan of the, uh, of the, uh, mixed-use, mixed-use pass every, every couple of blocks that, you know, are asphalt with some nice trees on, so it can allow people even west of Penman to bring their families to the beach without having, that they could have shaded areas and have a canopy to, to walk under without having to walk out in the road. And I think it would, you know, everything to make our, our community a little more walkable and, uh, I think is always beneficial because traffic's getting bad. If y'all.
Is this, is this a conversation that might be had in the context of strategic planning?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, it'll probably start there and then may follow up with a future briefing. The good news is, is that, um, everything you just said, Vice Mayor Nichols, we have Dennis Barron, Heather Ireland and Jason Fatidis listening in and all three of them have been instrumental in working forward on an urban trail initiative for the city, uh, of which we're currently in the process of, uh, requests for qualification from firms to help develop a final master plan for us. So the three of them are hearing, uh, what you're all saying and I'm sure they will take that and incorporate it into what they're working on.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this is a two-part kind of one having to do with a possible future briefing topic. But, um, before our city attorney left, we were, you know, starting to really make some headway, in my opinion, on a pilot program, uh, or just in some, an ordinance or pilot program for micro-mobility devices. Um, you know, now that we're into the summer season, it's not the time to examine this issue, uh, with due to large crowds, et cetera. But it's a good time to look at the, um, the is, the issue and have a plan for the future. Um, I was wondering if the council would be open to it and Mike would be open to it if, um, y'all would let me take a stab at a, um, pilot program for micro-mobility devices, um, working with, uh, you know, the known vendor that we have here, um, come up with a pilot program based on everything that we've discussed to this point and have it done by like Labor Day, sometime around there because our moratorium does come up in, at the end of the year. Um, so if we're gonna do something, I thought this would be a good time to just maybe possibly take it off of staff shoulders since we do have a new city attorney coming at some point. Um, I could do it entirely on my own, uh, use very little resource help from Elise, um, on just kind of getting some of the information that we have. And then by sometime right after Labor Day, come up with a general pilot program idea for, uh, a briefing topic. And, um, hopefully by that point have most of this stuff knocked out without taking time away from other projects. But something I could, I could do and give me a chance to take a stab at some legislation. So it's, it's up to you. I'd like, you know, if Mike's okay with it and if, you know, get council approval to, to work on it.
Not seeing any reactions by the council. So I'm gonna presume that that's a, let's hold off on micro-mobility for now?
I don't have a problem with, with Chet put some of his own sweat equity into it.
I'm fine with that as well.
I'm good with it.
Concern is, but my concern ends up being the legal avenues. The last time we spoke about it, we realized how much we are, how much risk we are opening up to the city. And, um, that is something I think is best handled by a legal professional who understands risk and is going to be able to dig into a lot of the other municipalities are facing. And they are getting sued left and right. And I, I, I think that's something that we really need. It, it's something that really needs to be thought through a legal lens versus, um, a vendor lens.
I concur. I was going to, um, use legal friends of mine who wouldn't mind giving me an hour or two of their time just as a friendship to, to look into. As a friendship to, to look into some of these issues. I wasn't just gonna go straight. I was gonna, you know. Actually talk to some people that might, you know, have some bearing, uh C O J. Which their pilot program we've kind of read is not very good. So it's some advice on what not to do. Um as well as kind of. Start looking at and, and pick up some of the pieces where um our previous, the, you know, use Elise's knowledge that. They had gathered thus far to, you know, kind of. Do all that stuff on my own and, and take it time off of staff's hands. So yeah, no, I, I agree that there were legal challenges. Um. Wasn't just gonna pull it out of thin air without a legal uh. Looking at it legally, but I thought it would be, you know, we've got to have something. By end of next year and we've got a lot of other stuff that a new city attorney is gonna have to engrain themselves on rather than this, so. Um but it's, you know, it's, like I said, I'm, I'm offering it. And it just comes down to what y'all think and if it's worth pursuing.
And I'd like to just throw out there for council. If council's desire is to have. A pilot program or a micro mobility ordinance in place sooner rather than later. And preferably to be implemented either at the start of or the middle of the summer. Will contact one of our attorneys and hand it off to them and have them start working on the project. If the intent is to have the new city attorney coming and work on it. And I would suggest that we continue to hold on this project until we get a new city attorney on board. Let this be one of the first projects that we give to them as a priority to move forward with. Uh but there's a reason why you did a twelve-month moratorium. And that twelve-month moratorium was to give you enough time to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted with regards to the legality of such a document. And that we have maximum protection for anyone who's renting these devices within our municipal limits. So obviously you can give me whatever direction or guidance you'd like, but my suggestion would be. If it's not imperative that it be on the books in a few months. Then I would say let's take our time and wait for the new city attorney to be on board and give this to them at that time.
I don't, I don't think that this is even a top priority when the new city attorney is on board. Um so I would say the third option is. I, I think Chet can do a lot of the research and the legwork and do some homework to get it to a point where. Obviously, we would need a legal review and would want to rely on our council to advise us before we adopt it, but I think there's a lot of research and legwork that. Can be done between now and that point. And if Chet's willing to do it, why wouldn't we take that?
So basically Chet's getting a homework assignment.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm asking for. I don't think it's a top priority. Like, like I said, I, I, I think to have something. At least to talk about after Labor Day is not a terrible idea that gives us a couple of months after that. You know, to before the moratorium even comes close to an end, so um but I, I, to the mayor's point. In my opinion, it's not something immediate and it's not something that we need to get the city attorney on right when he gets here. Um but I could, I feel like I could get a lot of background stuff done and. I don't know. I want to, you know, do something um that is, is fun and something that I think it could help. Uh so that's kind of my, my project that I thought I'd suggest, but um I'm, I'm open to whatever. I just am. It is, I guess I'm asking for a homework assignment, but if, uh, you know, the teachers don't want to give it to me, I'm okay with that too. It's less work for me, but it's also um something that I think I could contribute with uh. You know, that for six plus months from now, six months from now, we'd have. Something to at least look at um after I've done a lot of legwork and then. Hopefully we have a attorney, attorney and have some time to review it at that point.
I'll just jump in and say my, my hope would be that uh whoever we hire, maybe they have some experience with uh micro mobility devices. You never know. But um but I certainly, I don't have a problem with waiting to give them an opportunity to work on. To work on it because I, I'm concerned about the legal, the legal part of it as well.
I'll keep it brief as well. Um I'm kind of in line with, with uh with the mayor and, and you, Mike. I'm okay with Chad taking on this project. However, I, I do want to see our legal team, uh not anyone else. Because they're the ones that's going to hold the liability. Being the ones that review it, and I'd like to see it come before council before any pilot programs put in place.
And I'm not opposed to Chad taking a look at it either. And I'm, but I'm also not in any hurry to get something in place. It's the more I look into these, the. The more challenges I see, the more people, the more cities are getting sued continuously for it. You know, we're in a unique situation where this micro mobility portion of it is really not a last mile. Kind of situation because our, the way our community is set up. Buses or anything else that's going to, will get people within. You know, a couple, a couple of blocks of a location that's more of a entertainment. More of entertainment than it is a actual functional transportation. I think we need to consider that if we're going to um. With the city and, and um. With the exposure and, you know, the time and cost it would take. But I'm fine with Chad taking a look at it and. I, I mean, I mean, I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but I'd like to see what he come up with.
Sounds like Chet has a homework assignment. Okay. Uh we'll move on to councillor Golding.
Have a couple of things. Um I know this has been mentioned a few times. Uh I know the mayor has been having meetings with the, some of the downtown businesses. Maybe perhaps at a future briefing, uh the mayor could give us a, a nice summary of some of the issues that have come up and. What some of the discussion topics have been, just so that we can, the rest of the council members, since we can't attend. Generally, you know, at the same time, um have some insight into what the concerns are that, that you're hearing from the downtown businesses. And um. And then one other topic that I have talked to Mike about and. It has to do with, this was brought up at the last briefing um by Mister Stokes as well. There's a. There's a resident who lives on Waterway Island Lane and they. They want to do some dredging behind their property so that they can have twenty-four-hour access to the I C W. The, the marsh that's behind their property is owned by the city of Jacksonville Beach. And would be impacted by any dredging that would be done um in the, in that area and. You know, I've talked to Mike about it. This is something that uh. Mike suggested might be something we want to talk about after we've done strategic planning. But I just wanted to put that out there as something that. I've done a little bit of research and this is not a request that's ever come before the city before. Um so we don't have any. History with any other project that's, that's been like this, so it's kind of a new, kind of a new area. I don't know, Mike, if you want to add anything to the comments, but. It may be something that we want to have on a future, future briefing.
Yeah, I, I had talked to councillor Golding about this because of the request that came through to her. Uh there's a homeowner who backs up to one of the tributaries that goes to the intercoastal waterway. Um and obviously that that property, the, the water access is tightly influenced. So at low tide, they can't necessarily get their boat out. At high tide, they can. They would like to dredge a channel so that their boat has twenty-four-seven access out to the intercoastal. And based on the equipment that would be needed for the dredging, they would have to utilize a city portion of marshland for. For actual dredging. They would actually have to dredge out into our property. Um obviously this poses an issue because the contractor that he was, that the homeowner is working with. Has indicated the city would likely have to be either a co-permittee or possibly the lead permittee on the project. And that based on the impact to our property, there would likely be some type of wetland mitigation performed somewhere else within the basin. There's obviously a whole lot of issues with this request. One that's first and foremost is precedent. With regards to any property that abuts against tightly influenced water. If the intention is to be supportive of all of those homes to have twenty-four-seven access to deep water. Water boat access, then that means we may have more future requests coming in for people wanting to dredge. Uh and possibly more wetland mitigations or impacts to the city property or other private property. Um I felt that once we get through the strategic planning and we saw how this council felt with regards to. Environmental preservation and environmental stewardship. That would give us a pretty good idea of whether or not this is the type of project that we would support, or we would say, no, we're not looking to. Restructure or modify the existing or natural habitats that surround the intercoastal waterway. So uh my recommendation was that we not touch this topic until once we get through. The strategic planning process and see where environmental stewardship falls with regards to council and the community. But I think this gives you all a little bit of a background as to the request that we received and why it's very unique. It's not something that is uh common. So I saw a lot of heads nodding, so I'm guessing we'll address it once we get past strategic planning. Okay, good. I don't see any other hands raised and I see we're at six fifty-two, so I'm thinking this might conclude our meeting for this evening. For all.
Mike, what happened to the committee assignment report? So when Sandy asked for Chris to report out, I thought this was the part that she was reporting out at.
Uh she can if she'd like to, or if anybody else has information from any of the committees, projects or anything they've been tracking over the past couple of weeks. So I'll leave it to council for you to share whatever information you might want to share amongst yourselves uh for your report outs.
I can share briefly since it's already been brought up. The um. Business, downtown hospitality business owner meeting was held two weeks ago um and from city staff, Taylor was actually able to attend. Heather Ireland, um Chief Smith, Mike, Art Graham from the CRA and uh. Jason Sharp, I believe, from the police department. So it was very well attended. I did put Orange Crush on the agenda, which helped with the attendance, but we also had. Representative from Visit Jacksonville, Katie Matura, who came and gave an update on, and also, by the way, this was held at the Margaritaville Hotel. Um so we got to see their uh event space, but Katie talked about um. The tourism industry in northeast Florida right now, some of the numbers, uh what things are looking like, some of the things that motivate our visitors and some of the support that Visit Jacksonville can give. To the beaches through our visitor center as well as marketing support, um social media, things like that. So they seemed um very interested in that. Hang on one second. Alexa, turn off. And um we did have another update on um Orange Crush from our chief. I don't think it was any new information than, than what you guys had already heard, but. One thing that's uh positive at this moment is that the business owners are talking to each other. They have never really been in a room together like you would kind of think. Um so they're. Connecting, exchanging information, sharing um thoughts on not only this, but other, other. Challenges and opportunities that are facing them downtown. So um hopefully, once we get kind of into the summer, we'll be able to get a little more. Uh kind of regulated on, on the items that we talk about. Uh but at this point, they're really, they're, they're really wanting to hear from us. Uh at this time and, and they're being um. Coming out and attending uh very nicely. Um I think we had probably about forty people at the last meeting, so it's been going very well.
One quick thing I just wanted to add, let you all know to uh Jay Albert Telly. He's one of the uh. Partners in the Surf Star Group that owns Shim Sham Surf for Mangos and some of the businesses on Jacksonville. He is putting, he spearheaded in a volunteer beach cleanup the day after Orange Crush. I'll have more information and then second. I'm getting some of the downtown business districts to donate a ton of water, Gatorade, snacks. To our first responders, uh Orange Crush Weekend as well. So if you guys want to donate a case of Gatorade, snacks or water. Please feel free and I'll have more information on that too as well as we get closer to uh that week.
Does anyone else have any new information to report out on? Hearing none. Uh I think we're done for the evening. I'll see you all on Friday over at Parks and Recreation for our strategic planning session. Have a nice night.